Monday, May thirteenth, and this is a regular school board meeting. We're gonna start with roll call.
Charles Blacklands.
Here.
Reed Campbell.
Here.
Tom Hadlin.
Here.
Sue Kern.
Here.
Ruth Nelson.
Here.
Bob Nystrom.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Who? Second?
I think we have a first from Director Campbell, a second from Director Blacklands. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. District recognitions.
Alright, it's fun tonight to be recognizing people for outstanding work in the district again, and so I want to begin with congratulations to Olivia King and Braden Kramer, who were selected as the 2019 Athletes of the Year. I think they called them the Special K's is what they called them, so pretty exciting time for those kids. Also, congratulations to Taya Person and Renzen McKay for receiving the Minnesota State High School League Academics Arts and Activities Award, the three A award. Congratulations to them. Also, congratulations to the silent award winners, Sherry Kramer in wrestling, Nancy Russell, Bridget Snello, Eunice Peabody, Michelle Meyer, and Ann Johnson in volleyball, Ken and Beth Lacy for soccer, Eric and Jamie Sullivan softball, Heather and Donnie Berg, dance team, Tanya Person for tennis, and Steve Coles for athletics in general. It was really fun the night of the athletic banquet to see all of those people so surprised and recognized for getting those awards, for being such silent partners of our sporting activities. The next ones, I'm not going to read all of them because we would be here all night, but I want to congratulate all of the fine arts winners. Last week, we had just a wonderful fine arts presentation at the high school cafeteria. And as you can tell from the board agenda, many students were recognized for the Awards of Excellence. Many were also recognized for visual arts awards and also honorable mentions. And the Late Person of the Year this year was Scott Lichten, a PHS graduate and founder of the Lakes Area Music Festival. So congratulations to everyone who received those awards. Just, it's just amazing the work that our kids perform each day, each year, so congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. That's quite a list here. Now it's time for our public input. Is there anybody who wanted to come before the board today for discussion for anything? Seeing none, we'll go on with our building project update. Brandon, Chris, Scott.
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 It'll actually be, Chris wasn't able to make it, so it'll be Scott and myself tonight. We'll start out, want to give an update on property acquisition and where that's at. Lane and myself had talked to Natalie today. She had just a bunch of positive momentum. Fantastic day. She's closed on Baxter on the new site on, with the city. She had another closing on one of the Harrison projects. And as of right now, all of the properties, with the exception of two, have signed purchase agreements. So there's still a few closings that need to come about along the way. But so far, some really good momentum on that. So I'm gonna go back in, I'm just gonna give you some quick updates on the current active construction projects and where they're at, and then later in the meeting, we will be getting into the initial schematic design presentations. So as I said on today on Baxter, Natalie closed with the, with the city Baxter on that property for the new elementary. And we're starting work tomorrow. We're starting, gonna run Class Five in on the road and start grading and run all the way into the site and start working on clearing and grubbing, so very fast turnaround with that. In the meantime, we've been working on some groundbreaking details for the twenty-first out there at nine thirty in the morning. Justin's been working on a lot of permitting, tons of permits that need to come about. There's the conditional use permits that are done, the building permits, signage permits, a grading permit. There's just tons of, tons of paperwork that's getting shuffled right now. And as far as the status on the building permit, it's still pending the final state review. Everything's into them, just, just waiting for their final approval to come back so we can get the building permit. And if I move through anything, if you have questions along the way, just feel free to jump in and ask. On Harrison, our team's been courting with the staff on, regarding some tie-ins on where our new building ties in with the existing building. We'll have part of a wall that needs to get shored up and, and some demo that needs to take place and some structural elements inserted this summer. So we're gonna start on that right away when, when school gets out. Our site guys and Kale, our PM, has been working with contractors regarding sequencing to get started. There's a sanitary, storm's sanitary sewer that needs to get rerouted out around the building. It's currently underneath where the new building is proposed. So we need to get that out and rerouted and put back together for the start of school again. On contractors, we'll be mobilizing in the first week of June out there. So it's closing in pretty rapidly here in the next couple of weeks. Same thing with Nisswa, all these projects are kind of in the same stage. Everybody's working with the contractors, coordinating the start dates and the sequencing to get everybody moving. We're looking at getting construction fence installed the first week of June out there, along with site trailers and getting everything started and getting contractors mobilized right away for June. Again, same thing on Forest View, first week of June, everybody's looking to mobilize out there and get started. We're gonna start with the new entry, the new safe and secure entry, wanna have that done for the start of school, so we're gonna start on that right away in that first week of June. So they've been coordinating on using different entrances. We will need to keep, keep it open for emergency ingress, but it will be, staff and, and public will be rerouted and will not be able to use that entrance for, for the summer until we're done. And then they will be working on, and on working on the parent drop-off and all those revised layouts for that as well. And so with that ties in, the Knollwood and Jasperwood piece with the city. They're looking at a mid-June bid opening, and right now, they currently, the plan is to have Knollwood finished up by August thirtieth, so it's done for the start of school. That's the plan. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that everything comes together with that. And then they'll be working concurrently on Jasperwood as well, and the plan is to have that done this fall. Tentatively, these are the city's dates, but we're looking at, you know, the end of October, October twenty-fifth, on having Jasperwood complete too. So, you know, with that, and our PM, Justin Montingas, been working with the public utilities, working on getting both temporary facilities in there, as well as the permanent utilities that need to get running with the road construction as well. And I also want to remind the board, still other projects coming up. I'll call them little projects within our current projects. We still have playgrounds that we need to develop and purchase and get installed. Nothing that's a critical timeframe for this year, but still some, some pieces that we'll still be working with, with contractors and getting the work scopes developed and priced out. Playground, our furnitures, fixture and equipment, our FFNE. Some security camera upgrades that we have at all the buildings, we'll be talking about that more as we move forward. I know we want to try to get some work done at Forest View potentially this summer, so we're gonna work on getting that developed. And then we still have a bunch of needs that have come up along the way, our needs list that we're calling it. There's still some LTFM issues that needs to be addressed at some of these sites, some, some potential code issues. So even though some of these projects are bid out and we're under contract and we're moving, there's still some little bits and pieces we need to pick up and, and get finished up to make the projects finish out correctly. So that's it for those projects. I'll let Scott talk about the high school, give you an update on that, and then we're, we're headed with some of the lower lot development that we're seeking approval here as well.
I just had a question back on Harrison, on rerouting that sewer. Is it still gonna stay on our property or in the street?
Yes, it still stays on the school property. It just routes to the north further. So it's gonna come out, it's gonna run closer to Oak Street and run underneath the, where the playground is at right now. So we'll have to deconstruct part of the playground, run it underneath there and, and put it back together again. And right now, it's, it runs closer to the existing building and the, the new additions getting spotted right over the top of it, so we just need to get it moved.
That's the project in itself, yeah.
Yes, yes indeed. Okay.
Uh, the high school's moving along. We're in the construction document phase of the project. We had a preliminary co-review meeting with the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry last week Thursday. It was very, very good. There's no major issues that they see with the plans, so that means we're on the right track. We are pushing to have CDs finished up at the end of May and released to bid in the beginning of June. This is a very, very big project, and there's a lot that has to still come together, but everyone's heads are down and noses to the grindstone, so we're confident we're gonna, gonna meet this date. As far as the lower lot, there is a quote in your board packet for development of the lower lot into a bus staging drop-off area. The one million, seven hundred, seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred, seventy-seven dollars and twenty-three cents is what we would consider the project budget not to exceed. So that's a worst-case scenario. We're moving five feet beneath the tar, doing subsurface repairs, and then building it back in. We're pretty confident that we're gonna come in underneath that. This project was priced out in May of 2017, and very similar scope and very similar price, so that would be what you are approving today.
Scott, how will it, will it look any different than it is now?
It'll have new blacktop, more lights, and cameras now. Otherwise, it stays the same.
And how about the bus drop-off area?
Bus drop-off area will be in the lower lot, and it'll be down the center on the north side, which will be double striped for busing and parking.
Okay.
You're gonna have fifty-six bus stalls, two-hundred-and-ten north of the fence, so it'll be a divider between the north lot and south lot, and one-hundred-and-thirteen car stalls on the south side of the fence, as planned.
Scott, did that have anything in redoing the stairs? Was that in there?
No, at this time, it does not. Though we're hopeful that if we can come in far enough beneath the one-point-seven, then we'd have money to potentially do the stairs.
So you guys are looking at that and lights as well, okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep. When the funding is approved, we'll be able to have Bronn come in, do the geotech exploration, and we'll really be able to hone in on the scope then. Right now, we know that there's poor soil conditions in the south side. You'll notice there's a black strip leading from the bottom of the stairs all the way to the sidewalk. Well, that's frothy, that's causing issues with the tar, and might as well fix it the right way.
When did you hope that project would be done?
We'd start it this summer, and assuming we don't have to do the whole five feet, should be done before the fall.
And we'd be utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing for that, Anderson Brothers with that. So they have pre-established pricing, and that's how they've put, put the estimate together for it. And I, I guess I want to point out too, a little bit different than what we've, this process we've been going down, that's not part of our scope, so we're not designing it. Their civil team isn't designing it. Right now, everything falls underneath Anderson Brothers' contract. They're doing the design, the permitting, all the contracting and the installation underneath Sourcewell's cooperative purchasing for that, for that number.
Did we need to bid out for that project?
What was that?
Did we need to bid out for that project?
Nope. So part of Sourcewell is with the cooperative purchasing, all of the bidding is done up front and it's pre-established.
Okay.
So that's one of the biggest benefits of utilizing the co-ops. The public bid process has already happened, and it allows projects to move much, much quicker by, by doing it that way.
Very good.
Questions? Okay, without, with that.
There are some seat samples here, so we selected those last week. The seat that the Performing Arts Center will be getting is the one on the left, so you can see for comparison's sake. I just wanted to point that out before we...
In gray.
In gray, that's correct.
Yep.
All the material samples underneath it, so you can see what the wall's gonna look like, the carpet, and even potentially the curtain backdrop.
What's the seat on the right for?
Uh, that's kind of the base model seat, and then the upgraded seat on the left.
I asked this before, but you'll have different widths of seats?
That's correct. Twenty through twenty-two inches, and we're gonna look at sticking some potentially wider seats in there.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we will run right into schematic design, these initial presentations. We'll switch seats here with Kale. Kale can drive. So we will not be asking for approval today, just our initial presentation.
We're gonna have a curveball for you, Brandon. We're going to have Sarah with Will join us here for Garfield, and then Katie with JLG join us as well for Garf, or for Lowell and Riverside.
Do you need me up here?
No, if you don't, no. You can join us if you want, but...
We'll let them get up.
Okay. So bear with me here. I have, this is different than, so if I... We'll get the slideshow. I have about a ten-minute presentation here to go through. And there we are. Thank you, board members, for your time here. Looking forward to present this next round of projects, specifically Garfield Elementary, Lowell Elementary, and Riverside Elementary. And again, as Brandon alluded to, this is an initial schematic design presentation, so with that, encourage any questions, comments, concerns as we go through it. Feel free to stop me at any time. I'll try and answer any questions, and we'll work together to get you answers. So, starting out here first, Garfield Elementary. Val, if you wanna...
Alright. So the, a lot of the premise of Garfield was to bring it to its three-section key vulnerability. That is still achievable. Right now, what you're looking at is a view from the exterior. This view specifically is showing an addition on the left of the flagpole of the kitchen, and on the right of the flagpole, the administration. The administration was enhanced and made larger as part of the secure entry. Modifications that'll be at the front door. Right now, we, all of the additions should be seamless in terms of materials from the exterior, so it should be a really nice look at the end.
This next, this next slide is showing those additions that Val was speaking of in black on the current building, Garfield footprint.
Which, which is north?
North is to the right, plan right. So on the north side, what you'll notice here, what I'd like to point out, is a twenty-nine unit or a twenty-nine additional parking stalls as part of the property acquisition that we've undergone, so... And we'll get into further, into the presentation here, we'll get into further detail on these black blotches as they're shown here, so...
So on the next slide, the colors have turned into yellow and blue. The yellow represents actual building footprint, so those are new additions. Essentially, there's four locations of the additions. There's one at the kitchen and the main entry for the, our administration that I spoke about earlier. To the right of your page, there's two classrooms. Again, that's with the attempt of creating this into a pure three-section building. If we circle to the plan north, which is actual east, you'll see a little skinny yellow addition. That's to help create a third section of kindergarten. Yep. And then the last pieces of addition are actually building out some of that courtyard space. All in also, some of the other things that we're doing within the building, other than creating a three-section, is to, we're enhancing some of the special ed space, so we're giving them a little bit more square footage, enhancing some of their spaces as well. Also, we are creating some collaboration and flexible learning area, as well as providing an art, science, and technology lab within the building. The collaboration, art, science, and tech are all kind of around the media center, kind of creating that media center as a hub for the building. Generally, too, there'll be some other renovations throughout the space as we go through and try to upgrade and generally increase the overall experience of the building.
Would you show in that last, can I have you go back one? Show how the lunch lines are going to be different, because right now, the kids line up in the hallways, all, all the way through and, and go through the cafeteria to...
So I think this is kind of a really exciting thing that we, that we stumbled across in some of the design, is that currently, the lunch line actually happens out here. I believe it ends at about this point. Jody can correct me if I'm wrong. We're right by Intervention. Oh, it's not showing up on that screen. Yep, down between the Intervention and the AST room. The students stack out there, and then they enter into the cafeteria, those double doors that are into the cafeteria. So the new plan is to actually bring them in through where the kind of, the current stage is located, and to bring them in through those doors, have them go along the exterior north wall and navigate through a serving area and out into lunch. And then as kids, the neck, or the previous shift of kids needs to leave, they can go to that dish drop area and then exit immediately to the right. So it should kind of be a smooth and separate flow of children from the ones coming in to grab their lunches and the ones that are leaving and moving on.
Jody, do you feel that that's going to be really helpful with your flow of your building?
We are a little landlocked with the lunchroom door right by the front door, so yes, this is helping you prove it for us.
Okay. Alright, so here's just kind of an axon, so the new additions are shown in more of a bold color. The rest of the building's a little bit more grayed out, just so we can highlight where the additions are happening.
So a question for you right now, and I brought this up on Oversight too, though. The new entrance is brand-new, right?
Correct.
And it kind of looks like the old entrance. We're gonna change that up, aren't we?
Oh, yes. It's not the existing structure. It will be all-new construction.
Okay.
We're going through different ideas in how to make that canopy look a little bit better.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't want it to look like the same canopy.
Right. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. There's something special about some of that post-modernism, that architecture that's there, though, so...
And moving on here to, to my responsibility, the Garfield budget. Currently, as you can see, we show square footages and the associated costs based on historic projects, multiple, multiple stor, historic projects that we've done in the past, and currently, we're tracking right on budget, so... Yeah. Any questions on Garfield?
Do you have any items that you foresee that you would potentially have on an ad alternate? Because it would bring you above the budget at this time?
Garfield, we haven't really identified any, anything that we can provide and maintain budget, wants and needs that, but as we move into DEDs and, and start to speak more specifically with, with space users, yeah, I anticipate some of that getting added in, so... Okay. Lowell. Lowell Elementary, that'll be Katie with JLG, and Erica with WSN will join me to walk through that. So what you're looking at here is the new entrance to the south side of Lowell. It's impressive. It's come a long ways. It's been, it's been fun. It's been a challenge. But we all, we're all proud and happy of where, where this project is, from where it started to where it is currently. On the, on the center there, as you see, the trademark Brainerd Warrior Blue wall and the marquee, I guess, the marquee signage of the building. To the left, you see a new addition area, which we'll get into further with Erica and Katie here. That new addition area to the left is a multipurpose space with the new kitchen. Off to the right, immediate right to the blue, is admin space, additional admin space, reconfigured admin space, locker space. And then to the back, on the right, you see classroom addition, the, the large two-story portion behind it. And again, here, just an aerial view, the, the light gray area is showing the existing school, and the dark, and the light blue is showing the additions. I guess one thing that is notable in this, this view as well, is the parking spaces, forty-five additional parking to the south of the building. Again, as part of the property acquisition that we've, that we've done to date, so...
Did Todd squeeze in a new gymnasium to the upper right?
Very upper right, yes. The new basketball court, and yes.
Sure. Sorry, sorry. Alright, so just want to start off by thanking you for having us this evening as well, and want to share a few items specific to Lowell. While all teams have been great, we had a little bit of extra rework or modifications to make to this plan, and so they've been a super-duper team to stick there with us, and we have, I feel, a really great plan to present to you tonight. And so when, as we've been working on the plan with the Lowell team, as well as with the project oversight group, we obviously had some standards to maintain as far as classroom configurations and safety and security. And the plan that we're presenting tonight was able to make a, a good stride towards achieving both maintaining the standards, as well as balancing working with the budget, and trying to incorporate and maintain the daily education, educational needs that were set pre-referendum by this team as they worked prior to the referendum being set even, on how they wanted to have this building function. And so on the lower level here, you'll see that we have, the blue area is the kindergarten or the addition portion of the project. The light kind of golden tone is heavy remodel areas, and then the lighter kind of greenish tone is lighter remodel areas. On this lower level, the, the goal of this school was to have it be a three-section kindergarten with a four-section first through fourth grade, and this is due to the EGAT program that's located at this building. And so on this lower level, we have the three sections of kindergarten, along with multiple spaces for the art, science, tech, and you'll see incorporated in that is the media space. And as we work through with this, with these teams, it really was a good fit for this building to work the media into the specialized spaces. You'll also note that there's a, the flex classroom for this building is located on this level as well. You'll see that just to the right, or to the left, I'm sorry, of the kindergarten interior classroom, as well as all the spaces being able to, educational classrooms being around the perimeter of a learning commons. To the, what would be, plan north is actually, or north is actually to the left on this plan, and so to the bottom part, or portion of the building, or to the west side, would be your sped areas. And so you can see that we've reconfigured that existing media center and staff lounge area to be conducive for the special ed spaces. On the main level, we have, again, you can see the blue areas are areas where there is the addition to the building, and the lighter golden tone are the heavy remodel areas. A portion of this addition, you'll see kind of off to the far right-hand side of the page and to the top, a portion of that is all on... a portion of that is all on-grade. This building sits similar to Harrison where you have a portion of the main level being on-grade and then you take about a half-flight up and walk up into the, what we refer to as the main level then of the building. And so you'll see again, we were able to work in the four sections of first and second grade around learning commons. And then as well as off on the far right-hand side is the new, brand-new entry, controlled entry investibule with the reception area and all the associated offices and workrooms. You'll also see off on the right-hand side is the brand-new multipurpose cafeteria. And that multipurpose is going to be also utilized for gym, second station for the younger grades, K and one. And that will provide some, provide some relief is the word I'm looking for. Provide some relief on the existing gymnasium so that they, those kids can get the full amount of gym time that they need. You'll also see off of the multipurpose cafeteria areas, the kitchen, the brand-new kitchen. So we're relocating that out of the lower level and bringing that up to the main level, which provides a great opportunity then for when deliveries for food happen and just ease of that. Then up on the upper level, you'll see again, similar to the main level in this portion of the building, the addition portion off on the upper part and interior heavy remodel happening on the remainder of that floor level. Again, this is third and fourth grade and both are, all four sections of each grade are surrounding the learning commons then. We also have provided the opportunity for getting, designing in new toilet rooms on each level. So that is going to be nice for them to get that and have ADA compliant toilet rooms. And then I think overall, the one other item that I probably mentioned is that as we've been working through this project and working with Cale and determining budgets, there is a few items that have been figured on this project that are above and beyond the base portion of the project. And so we have, today Cale will show you that base bid. But we are trying to see as we work through design to see if there's a way that we can work those into the project. One of them is, you'll see between a couple of the rooms within each of the learning communities, you'll see a operable glaze partition dashed in. Those are right now items that we're looking to try to gain, gain enough budget to see if we can work them in. They may become an ad alternate at some point, but that's yet to be determined. The second item that I know that we're looking to work into the budget potentially is the difference in the kitchen, the capacity of the kitchen. And I won't go into a lot of detail in that, but just to let you know that those are a couple of items that we're working through as we continue with furthering the design. So you can see, as Cale already briefly explained, the exterior rendering here. Off into the south side is the brand-new entry addition. You'll see in that lighter tone where there's the three taller windows on each corner, that's the multipurpose cafeteria space. The kitchen is off on the Third Avenue side. The vertical blue element again is the unifying element at all of the new entries. The brick-colored tone massing is your admin addition. And then back further, you'll see that two-story classroom addition in a lighter tone that incorporates the various, I think it's first and third grade for those additions.
Quick question, where, the, the new entrance will be to the south.
Yep.
And maybe you mentioned this, but where are the buses going to line up?
So the buses will be on Third Avenue. And apparent pickup and drop-off will be on G Street, which is on the south side there by the main entrance. And we can flip back to the site plan if it's easier to see it that way.
Yeah, maybe I should have pointed that out. So that main entrance on the south, on the south side, the new main entry, that's where we're planning for parent pickup and drop-off. And then on the, is that, that would be the west side will be the bus drop-off and pickup.
So they'll have that door open for them to go in during the bus period times.
The current main entry will be?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, no, you go ahead, Bob.
Erica, the building addition going into the playground, does that create any issues with MDE?
Uh, no. This is an area, it's minimally impacting the actual playground area. You can see on this rendering here. We may have a little bit of rework right there on that corner that's closest to the addition. But I think it's very obtainable to accomplish as we work through that in design.
This, this is maybe a question, not as much for you, but maybe Todd?
Is, right now they, the, the drop-off is on Third Street. People tend to come rolling in from the south heading north and drop it off to the west, children off to the west side?
Yep.
Or to the backside for the most part. And the buses stage on the, on the?
South side.
Yep, we're flip-flopping.
So right now typically, bus might, buses might enter into Third Avenue. But now what will be happening is parents will be entering into Third Avenue where the buses already are. So would that be perceived as a bottleneck at all? Or, you see what I'm saying with, but also then the staging, parents might come down, is it Fourth Avenue? Is Fourth Avenue, is that, are there stop signs along the way from 210? Or is it?
There are at Fourth and, yeah.
Yeah.
There's stop signs as you turn onto Fourth from each street. Or out, but not on each street.
Because right now you enter 210, turn off 210, come Third, pretty much unimpeded by stop signs.
The nice thing about Third Avenue is they did widen that right next to our building. So that gives a little bit more space than on G Street. And then as we do the parking lot, I would guess that will, there'll be some modifying.
It's a, one comment I have on the entrance, the main entrance, it's kind of tucked back in there and kind of hidden away. Wonder, and almost like you should have that blue out front farther or something, or something to dress it up a little bit because it looks kind of a big plain wall right there. As your front entrance and your welcoming spot.
Yeah. I do know with, the effort to date has really been on getting the plan to work. And so there hasn't been a lot of time taken to study the various massings on this building. And I know that that's something that JLG is working on, so.
Yeah, that would be my one concern on the outside of the building.
Sure.
Make sure that front actually looks like a front.
Okay.
Sure.
Noted.
Quick, quick cosmetic question on the stack, the exhaust chimneys, do those still have to be that tall with today's?
Currently, right now, it's, we can remove that. It's in this, it's showing in this diagram here, but we're exploring the option of taking it out or leaving it. The problem is, it is an expensive piece to remove for very little square footage within the, within the building itself.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking of gain a square footage, just an exterior cosmetic.
Sure.
Remove it.
Sure.
Bring it down.
That's good. Any other questions?
Good on Lowell, okay. Budget, budget-wise, yeah, as Erica had alluded to, we are efforting pricing for certain amenities that Todd and his staff have, have identified as wants and needs. One being the, the movable partitions, which come at a fairly, fairly expensive cost. But then also the, a new elevator. So we're going to keep those things in mind, some other things, some glazing at the garden level to try and get more borrowed light, more daylight into the lower, lower classrooms. But we're going to continue to research that and, and understand those better as we move forward. So we got a laundry list of items that we would like to incorporate. But at the end, the budget, budget will dictate, so.
Instead of the movable partition, what's, what will be in there if you don't go with that?
Well, we've talked about either a movable partition or a wall with minimal aluminum glaze, glazed doors, operable doors that could be held open to utilize that space and have that flexibility to have a larger space. But again, it's, it's early on and, but if the, if the, the glazing and the movable partitions are out of our budget, it would be a permanent wall with some sort of entrance through there. And I guess the other thing I would note here on this is the bottom line here. We are, you know, with our current square footage, which in, is, we are currently tracking about three thousand additional square footage from where we were with the referendum and still maintaining budget. So we've done a lot of work and we've come a long ways to, to make the flow and the, and the teaching methodologies work within the, the existing space. And, and I think we've got good bang for our buck with our square footage, so.
You see, they both had new boiler plants too, so they're brand-new total and they were on our master plan of changing.
That's correct. Yep, yep.
I would like to add to just, both of the teams, Garfield and Lowell have just really been awesome about providing input and trying to make these buildings just function as positively and as well as they can educationally for our kids. I have to say that Lowell was, started out to really be a challenge. And it has been just really exciting to see the work that that team has done along with the standards and to find that, that compromise that is really going to be a great functioning building. And so I, hats off to both Lowell and to Garfield for the work that these core teams have done to get it to this point. It's been great, so thank you, both of you.
Alright, Riverside, they too have been fun to work with and a great group. And so you can just see here, it's a quick image of the new main entry. The, obviously, the addition that was done in 2015 added some new square footage onto their building for the new admin or to expand their admin. And they have already the configuration of a controlled entrance. So really, this is more of cosmetic upgrades to this front entry to introduce the unifying element and get this entry to look as the others will standard-wise. So you can see on the site plan here, this building is receiving a couple of additions. Majority of the addition is off on the east side or to the river side. And then there is a small addition off to the west side. And I'll explain those a little further. You can see that the primary or larger addition off on the east side does impact this playground more than some of the other building additions that we've shown you tonight. And so we have some reconfiguration to do. And one of the items is to redo the basketball court or hard surface play area. And we've shown that just to the east of the addition in blue there. And then likewise, we need to relocate some of the playground equipment as well. And so you can start to see that just to the south of the addition. And there has been some discussions about possibly having just a bituminous walking track to possibly entertain at this site, something still to further study as well. The main, other main point of this site work being done at this location is, as we started talking with this group, with the core group from this building, there was expression of the need to potentially have a tie to that south parking lot area. There is an existing parking lot there as it is, as it stands now. But there isn't a connection directly out the south end of that building. And so we'll show you that here on the actual plan and how we've introduced that to the overall layout. The other positive of connecting down to that south parking lot is to provide ADA compliance. And so that's another element that we looked at as we entertained that item. The intent of Riverside is to keep it, keep it as a five-section school. And so we have five sections of each grade shown off to the, I'll start on the far-left side of the building and we'll just walk to the right then. We have, as it stays now, the third grade classrooms remain as they are or in the locations that they are. They are in part of the new 2015 addition. Off to the upper portion, you'll see a couple of fourth grade classrooms. And then they kind of come around and down into that other corridor that's just to the east side of, and I should say planned, or north on this is also to the left. All these buildings are orientated, I guess they're almost all sitting the same direction. We have the fourth, the remainder of the fourth grade classrooms sitting there as you come around that bend in the corridor. And then the flex classroom for this building is located just to the side of, to the right of that fourth grade classroom. You'll see a couple of sped spaces or sped classrooms just to the south of that as well. The existing gym to the west of this corridor remains as-is. The areas again that you see shaded in blue are the new addition areas. And the area shaded in that golden tone is, are areas of remodel. And so you'll see just to the south of the existing gym there, a couple of storage areas. There, one of them is an existing locker room that's getting converted just to become a storage, basically gutting it and simplifying it. And otherwise, there's some rework of some doors and such happening to just better those storage areas for that gym. The smaller box there that's in that same area, that's their sensory room. And again, the door is being relocated and some rework being done to the mounting of the swing in that space as well. You'll see the layout of this building lends itself to being where that front admin entry area, reception area is, all the way through the building to the, to the east side is kind of what we're referring to as a public corridor or a main street. And you'll see that we've done some reconfiguration to incorporate having their cafeteria being more open. There's some walls being removed there. An introduction of, you'll see a smaller collaboration space. That's also going to be dual-purpose for, there's a high sped population at this building. And with the severe and profound programs, one of the requests was to create an area for those kids to eat that is in a, a lower ceiling area so that the acoustics are more controlled. They're maybe not, they're more sensitive to sound and so that would better improve that space for them to eat in. And so that's what we've created there. The kitchen will be totally, the existing kitchen will be totally demolished. And you, what you see in front of you is a reconfigured, total new kitchen. To the, to the left of the kitchen is the, one of the new additions, and that's the receiving area. So again, in close proximity to the kitchen for deliveries. Then to the other side of the corridor there, you see we're adding an art, science, tech space as well as then another additional gym space. And that again, looking to have it be multipurpose. And so it lends itself nicely then for this building to be able to have both the north and the south areas of the building be locked down for, and then still keeping that core area for public use. To the south side of that core area, again, you'll see a lot of existing spaces remaining as-is. Second grade, first grade, your sped spaces. And then off on the upper right-hand area is where the existing kindergarten classrooms are along with some Title I spaces. And what we're doing there is we're right-sizing those classrooms. So it's indicated as being remodeled areas. And again, just right sizing those along with reconfiguration of some toilet rooms to allow for better utilization for the kindergarten spaces. So again, you'll just see the massing of the addition, still in its early stages as we've mentioned on all these buildings. You'll see that addition of that additional multipurpose gymnasium and an introduction of some upper glazing, potentially some cow wall is a product that we have used in gymnasiums and just to allow some natural lighting to come into that addition. Likewise, it's just another view of that two, addition for the multipurpose gym just from the north side.
And then the budget here, as you can see here, we're like the others who are tracking on budget with our square footage costs and our current plans. You know, and, and that actually does include the exterior glazing in the multipurpose areas. So, yeah, we feel comfortable where we're at with this project and, and, yeah, excited to move forward, so.
Good, very good.
Any other comments or questions?
Just, how does the property acquisition south of Riverside fit into this? Is that going to be a part of this, you know, where those houses are and then the property that was purchased?
Yeah, we already own that at this time, but we haven't done anything as far as demolishing any of those buildings or.
Or creating a new playground?
Creating, yeah, we haven't talked to anything about that at this time. I do know that some of that land by the Burlington Northern Railroad area, they're really using as parking lot right now. I was there for a concert the other day and all the staff were parking there and all the guests were parking in the parking lot. So it's kind of interesting how people are already using that space, so, yeah.
I will say that on that south entrance there, we are upgrading that, that area there for potential future upgrades or parking spaces to the south, so.
And I'd like to just remind the board that tonight's the first, the initial look at these three facilities. And so if there's anything that you want us to take a look at between now and May twenty-eighth when we approve the schematic design, there's lots of time that you can still give us some input in which to do that. And then once schematic is approved, then we'll move into two viewings of design development prior to saying this is our final project, so. They're looking beautiful, so, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is approval of minutes for the regular school board meeting on April twenty-second. Is there a motion?
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Nystrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And then the approval for the minutes for the special school board meeting on May sixth.
So.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first from Director Haglin, a second from Director Campbell. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I'll move the approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Haglin. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now, we have some site reports here. We're going to start with Sarah Porish with our Chromebook update and iPad purchase information.
All right. So I am here tonight to update you on where we are in our one-to-one schedule and I'm looking for some approvals on some leases tonight. We are looking at both the Chromebook and the Apple lease, so we'll talk through both of those. I wanted to put this in there, it's a little bit small, but this is our, our timeframe. And we are at May thirteenth, so we're a little bit, about a month later than I was hoping to be on this, but we're still tracking very well on time. Upon your approval tonight, we will order the devices right away tomorrow. We will get shipment of our devices by June sixth, the week of June sixth. And then our team will go to work and get all twenty-six hundred of those Chromebooks and four hundred of those iPads ready to go for a distribution date of the week of August nineteenth. So we, I've been working with Ms. Rusk and, around the distribution and it looks like it's going to be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday in the evening of that week. In communication, we'll be going out to families shortly, within the next couple of weeks with all of the information around that. So the device, after our, our committee has looked at many different devices, we knew, as you knew, that, know that we were looking at Chromebooks. And we landed on the Lenovo three hundred E Chromebook, which is this one. What we really like about it is, number one, the touchscreen. Like I had told you before, that was, that was high on our priority list for curriculum reasons at our high school. Math and science especially, we were really looking for a touchscreen. So this one is a, it spins all the way around into a tablet and then you can literally write on it like a, like a piece of paper and save those things. So this is the one that came out and I'm going to pass this around for you to look at. And also, military ruggedness, Gorilla Glass on the screen, I mean, they're really, really strong devices, so.
Sarah, are you ordering cases, protection, protective cases and such?
We actually, it's going to, we're putting out a order form for families because what we found, we polled the kids and stuff. They have their backpacks and they're not, you know, we're switching away from lockers, so they have their backpacks with them. And that's what they have the case sleeve within that. And so we are doing an optional, additional if, if families want to do that.
How heavy is the case?
What was that?
How heavy is the case?
The, it's a sleeve. Basically, they can choose a sleeve or a backpack option is what we've been working with GLS on. So the budget used for all of this, I think my slides got kind of out of, is our technology budget. We were able to do this within our existing technology budget through both of these projects. And that is really through strategizing with what we have and really long-term planning and being smart about how we're using our resources. So who will get these Chromebooks? Mainly they're for our ninth through twelfth grade, like we talked about, VHS, LEC and AEC, all ninth through twelfth grade students. So that's about twenty-one hundred students. Our DCD program at Forest View will also use these programs, so that's for our low-functioning, some of our low-functioning students will use these. And then elementaries in grade two. So as I tap through iPads, I'll explain this a little bit more, but grade two is really our transition year from iPads to Chromebooks. And so four of these will be going into each classroom and that will help transition our grade two because they'll have the touchscreen, but then able to start putting in their passwords and getting used to their Google apps and such. And then Depot three hundred and ninety-one, Depot is actually here in this building. And it's where, I didn't want to call it storage because it's not, it's store, it's so fluid. So it's where we store them, but they're in and outs and, and being used all the time, so. CDW won this Chromebook bid. They're providing twenty-six hundred Chromebooks along with twenty-six hundred Google Chrome licenses. They are on the Sourcewell contract as well, so that was a bonus for us to that they came in where we needed them to. And that's a total cost of six hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. Then we also went out to find the best financing options. Vantage was able to come in, that's who we have our Toshiba leased through as well, so we're really familiar with working with them and we've been happy with, with our partnership with them. And it came in at one hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred per year, which was right under my budget that I was looking for, so I was very happy about that. And then with the total lease cost of six hundred and twenty-two thousand at the end. And that includes that we will keep ten percent of the devices and they pay for ninety percent to be shipped back, which is what we were looking for. Because the plan is after this lease, that students, if they, if their new ones need to be repaired, that they will then get one of these to check out. So they'll always get the version behind to check out. And that was recommended from districts that have gone through this process before. Any questions about the Chromebooks right now?
I thought it said vintage financing at first.
Oh, vintage, yeah. That'd be ironic, huh? All right. So then the iPad. We, the story behind the iPads is, we looked, we did a lot of research. If we were ready to go to the touch Chromebook at our K-one level as well, knowing that that was really, you know, we were using Chromebooks throughout. Lots of research and discussion has landed us on that we need to continue with the iPads at these, for these next four years again at the early childhood, kindergarten, first grade level. So those classrooms will get four iPads in each classroom. We've, we discussed with everyone, they're using them a lot in stations. The kind of cool thing is, I just went with Patty Wallace the other day on the new math curriculum, there's some cool tie-ins that we're going to be able to do with these. So as well as the Chromebooks in the second, third and fourth grade levels. So it's nine-point-seven inch iPad, Apple's gone away from the iMini, the Mini iPads now and they've gone back to more the, the full screen. And then we went with the Brent Haven case, again, very, very rugged. It has the stand if they want it. And then for our, our team, the bonuses are the clear back, so it's really easy for us to see the barcodes and do what we need to do with those. And then also, it's easy to get on and off for our team. Not necessarily for students to get on and off, but our team, when we need to do our, our repairs on them, they're fairly easy to get off.
So Sarah, so we're getting new Chrome, some new Chromebooks for grade two. What are grade three and four?
Yeah, that's a great question. So they will continue with their classroom sets. So if you remember last year, what we did is we, at each building, we looked at the largest number of classes in each section and then they got that number of carts. And so for instance, at Riverside, there's five carts for them.
So Chromebooks.
Chromebooks, correct.
Just a different model.
Yep, those are the Lenovo N twenty-threes and with the flippable cameras. You got it. And so, and I think three years, it'll be their cycle, two years, it'll be Forest View's cycle. So it's all on a refresh cycle moving forward. So who will get these devices? K-one classrooms, it equals about a hundred and seventy-six. Our self-contained special education classrooms at K-four also get sets of four of these. And so mainly that's our EBD classrooms in those areas. Early childhood classrooms will be getting fifty-four iPads. And I should have said, our higher functioning DCD students at Forest View get the touchscreen Chromebooks. Our lower functioning DCD students at VHS and FMS operate on iPads. And that again is based on many meetings and research with those instructors. And then Depot, and I say miscellaneous because we have, like our Forest View robotics program, they need iPads to run the robotics that they do. So I say miscellaneous because we're ordering some to cover those needs as well. Because they do not run on Chromebooks, the robotics that they use. The, the, our order includes four hundred iPads, four hundred cases and then four hundred of the licenses that we need for the four years that we own the device at a total cost of a hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Apple is the only seller to K-12 education. So I did reach out just to confirm that again and they still, they don't allow any resellers for K-12 education, so we have to go with what they offer us. So, and they actually came in, our lease, we did look at other lease companies and Apple actually won this lease as well. So at thirty-six thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars a year, total lease cost of one forty-five, nine eighty, they came in at a zero percent lease rate with us, which was pretty amazing for Apple to come in that way. And then at the end, we actually get, we own the devices, but with Apple, with iPads, we won't want to reuse those in any way. So we're able to sell them back generally, but right now the value is looking, after four years, right around eighty, ninety, a hundred dollars in there. So we have a, that's one thing about Apple, they have a really good resale value on them. No questions about the iPads? Okay, so specific lease and quote documents are, were included in Board Book for you to review. There's one on the lease schedule AO two, it's just, they originally on the Board Book one, they had our supplier of equipment as Tierney, it's CDW. So we will be updating that to Board Book, but that was the only change on that.
Very good. Okay.
Any other questions or anything? We will be looking for approval on both of those, these leases tonight then. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Principal Academy update and presentation with Heidi Han, Teresa and Jody Kennedy.
Okay, well, good evening. So it's a privilege to be with you here again this evening. We're excited to share with you, we've been on a two-year journey together as an administrative team. Superintendent Larson, in July of two thousand and seventeen, posed before us the opportunity to attend the Minnesota Principals Academy that was in partnership with the University of Minnesota and Sourcewell and other principals and leaders in Region Five. And our entire administrative team decided to collectively go together, so we want to give you an overview. I brought with me the materials that I actually had in my office, there's still a pile of more books at home. But when you talk about intensive, research-based, high-driven professional development for school leaders, this has been it. So we've actually been, the last two years have gone through significant time together and reading and research and collaboration along with other principals in our region, so we want to give you those highlights. The miss, the mission of the Principals Academy is to provide school and district leaders with skills, research and tools they need to design and lead high-performance education systems. So this is based on the National Institute for School Leadership. So this was our team at the beginning of our journey, so some of the faces in that picture have changed, but many of us are still the same. And then the picture to the left, that's actually Principal Kathy Knoll. She was featured in Sourcewell's Well-connected Magazine in the fall and winter edition, just really describing in her entire tenure as a principal, the impact that this learning has had on her career. So why has this been so important? Research will let us know that principals' impact, have an impact on almost twenty-five percent of what impacts student learning as well as then their impact on teachers and hiring and training and retaining those teachers. And teachers account for about thirty-three percent of the impact on our student learning. So you put the two of us together and that's over half of what leads to the impact on our students. So really taking the time and energy and effort to focus our skills. So the National Institute of School Leadership, just to give you a little bit of background. It was back in nineteen ninety-nine and the National Center for Education and Economy, as well as the Carnegie Foundation, started to look at and compare educational leadership, training to how they're trained in law, medicine, business and the military and found out that to really improve school leadership, we needed to have research-based, job-embedded, cohort-centered, meaning we need our colleagues to talk with, and scalable leadership development. In two thousand and five, the legislator actually, legislation, legislature, thank you, I've had too many beatings today about school funding, so I'm getting that word mixed up a little bit. But they took legislative action in two thousand and five to actually fund some type of leadership academy. And the Minnesota Department of Education awarded that grant to the University of Minnesota. So the University of Minnesota spent time with our Principals Association, secondary and elementary, along with the Department of Education, the Minnesota Administrators for School, or Minnesota Association for School Administrators and Business Partnerships to then develop what has become known as the Minnesota Principals Academy. The goals are to equip us with the skills we need to lead our schools to become high-performing schools for all of our students. It assists us engaging in very strategic and systematic processes for that school improvement. We've developed ways to sustain a collaborative learning culture and environment with one another and really challenging us to draw on best practices for instruction to improve our practices, to increase student achievement. And so we'd like to give you an overview. So how that was done, our curriculum. So how that was done, our curriculum, this is it, we're missing still about half the pile of books that we've been engaged in and reading and studying and talking about. We've all been charged with doing an action learning project. I believe you've been invited to come see our final presentations at Sourcewell in June, but I'll give you a summary slide at the end of what our principals have taken on, as well as that collegial collaboration. So what's been very unique is Brainerd is one of the first districts to send their entire leadership team. Including Superintendent Larson has been in attendance with us, myself, Mr. Murtha, Sarah Porish from Technology. And we've all come collectively. That's very unique when typically you've seen a principal or two coming from different districts. So we definitely have filled most of the room in Region Five. But we've enjoyed getting to know our surrounding colleagues and their leadership challenges and skills that they're bringing for us. So those are the, the methods.
When, when is the graduation or the?
June, I feel important, it is going to be a graduation. Charles, you need to come. It is going to be a graduation, because we feel like blood, sweat, and tears have gone into our learning and time together. But June twelfth, it's Wednesday. And I believe you'll be getting an invitation that'll give you kind of a guide, because besides our Brainerd team, you'll be able to hear from administrators throughout the region of what projects they've taken on in their action learning. So we wanted to give you just a quick overview. We're not going to spend a ton of time on this, but if you'd like to.
Give Tim short.
Yeah. We'll keep Tim short. But just kind of the units of study we've gone through. And we started really with looking at the educational challenge. With Thomas Friedman's book, you know, the United States has been such a leader, but we found out, and as you've seen in the news, how we're being outperformed. So we looked at top-performing countries and doing the research around that. The second that we went through is really looking at how, as a leader, are we a strategic thinker? And they actually took us through the Cuban Missile Crisis, and how that crisis was averted, and looking at how you put that in the context, creating a vision, a mission, and then developing a strategy and strategic planning around that. The third one, which is, this is like, gets Tim all excited, so.
Now I have the remote. So it's all condensed about a hundred and ninety-six hours of collaborative learning into a couple of brief slides here real quick. What the principals were engaged with was understanding the need for having a system that produces a high-quality curriculum, one that's grounded in the standards, one that has evidence of curriculum process, whether it's through its syllabi, its instructional materials, one that is leveraging sequence progressions of formative assessments and summative assessments to ensure that they understand how students are performing, and that there are clear gateways for students as they progress with their learning. So in addition to that, the principals are expected to understand those foundations of effective learning, which really concentrate on the ability to address students' preconceptions of information. How students take factual information, combine it with conceptual frameworks to build new knowledge, retain new knowledge, to organize that knowledge, retrieve, and then even apply that knowledge. So they're, they're asking an awful lot of the principals really to get into the art and science of teaching. And finally, go ahead onto the next one, I'm sorry. The next step was taking that learning and applying it specific to the core content areas. So language arts, history, in the course case of the humanities, there's that complex text analysis that the principals need to be able to do, and understanding how knowledge and reasoning skills are applied through those areas. I won't go any further into that, just that there's instructional frameworks in place that allow students to make, make new learning and employ it. Now, the principals have to be able to engage in that conversation with their teachers. The same would be true then for math and science, where that braided concept of the different elements of math instruction, or the cross-cutting, and core concept ideas of the next generation's science standards are brought together. Principals need to be familiar with that on a conceptual level. The next thing that they're expected to do is take that knowledge and apply it in the development of individual staff. The instructional leadership that they're being asked to do also implies coaching of individual teachers. Having those conversations about challenging teachers around their instructional practices, being able to give descriptive feedback to principal, or to teachers around their instructional practices. You see that there's a ladder there of progress in the coaching model between observing teacher practice, making meaning, how does the teacher learn through the reflective practice, and guiding them to those top levels? So again, we're asking an awful lot of our principals in this process, which leads us to promoting the learning organization. If coaching is a model for dealing with individuals and supporting individual teachers, how is the system being supported? How is the system growing? Whether it's the system at the school level, or the system at the district level? And again, the principals were challenged in their thinking here to make sure that they understood that the learning organization is an organization grounded in its mission and vision. It's intentionable, intentional about creating urgency around appropriate evidence-practice change. And then making sure that to implement change, you're identifying those forces or drivers that are moving you forward, but you also are very cognizant in addressing those forces that are pushing back. And so the principals are provided with resources, how to implement and manage change over time. And that transitions back to Heidi.
So we got into our, our further discussion of really looking at systematic change and making an impact. We looked at how do we become better teams for instructional leadership? And that's where the challenge was really pushing our principals out of, what does it mean to lead a building? And have that quality within your building, and applying it back to a collective team of leadership, and creating that instructional leadership amongst one another? And really looking at, you know, we did Roger Swartz's book, but how can we be smarter collectively, rather than just solving our individual building problems? And that's a growth area for all of us. And, and that's probably our biggest growth area, I think that's coming through this whole experience for all of us, is not necessarily just being our individual building leaders, but being leaders collectively within the district to continue to move the district forward. So I was done with a lot of the work on our Unit Nine. The, we spent quite a bit of time on really looking at leadership for equity, and, and looking at how do we continue to push our equity lens and, and move all students forward? We spent one full day reviewing the history of public education. And, and that was pretty powerful for all of us too, as we looked at some of the repetitive patterns that have happened in public education, and how we need to make a shift to change that pattern. And really then looking at the biases that we bring to the table in our education forces. That's probably one of the books that has the most tabs in for a lot of us. We spent a lot of time in that area. Unique to our group is social-emotional learning wasn't part of the National Institute for School Leadership. And our collective group in Region Five said we'd really like more information. So we had two researchers from the University of Minnesota working specifically with a search institute come and meet with us. Tim and I also did the additional training in the cities and then brought it back, to really look at how do we foster developmental relationships with all of our students within our systems. And that's one of our big focus areas and continues to be, is really incorporating that social-emotional learning. And then the, the last part, which, you want to talk to Tim? Sure?
The, the last part of this is about pulling all those threads back together again, whether it's the social-emotional learning, the instructional frameworks, the curriculum process, the coaching. It's about understanding that high-quality systems have collaboration involved, and that there's support for teachers in terms of giving them leadership roles, sharing responsibility of the professional learning within the system, and then that shared sense of responsibility, both through the learning, the adult learner and the child learner. And that making sure that we're working together back to that sense of mission and vision with a very strong sense of urgency. So that's what pulls it all back together.
So, what I have in front of you here, these are our action learning projects that are currently going, a couple of principals that are still going to put that in there. But if you look at all the different areas that they've spent time researching, and, and basically taking action of how they can create that change and bring more to their buildings, these are the different pieces that people will be talking about and presenting on. So we have a wide variety of topics. And again, like I've talked about, collectively, when you look at a district team, I think we're small but mighty. It's probably a great way to describe our group. You know, and we do amazing things here, but again, what skills do we have and what can we bring together to make the greatest impact for Brainerd Public Schools? I believe what we've learned in this process is that anytime we're going to initiate change or move something forward, what we really need to do is spend a lot of time researching, and then collaborating and problem-solving with one another before we implement anything and, and put it into place. So it's been a very powerful process. And I brought Mrs. Kennedy along this evening. We were also supposed to have Mr. Anderson, but he unfortunately is going to be attending a funeral. So I brought Mrs. Kennedy along so she can talk a little bit about her action learning project and the impact that the Principals Academy's had on her. And then I was hoping more principals would have stayed in the room. But Ms. Porish is still here. Is somebody else here? Okay. They knew we were presenting. So, but you can direct all your questions then to Ms. Porish and Ms. Kennedy.
Good job, Julie.
Way to represent.
Okay. Yep, hi. Thanks for having us tonight. I know that when Lane first came and approached all of us, when she was fairly new to our system and offered us the opportunity to learn, we had probably been in a place where we had tried a variety of things and structures for learning as a, an administrative learning team, and maybe had changed some of our past patterns. So I really felt like this offered us the ability to continue to learn together, and not just as a principal group, but as an entire administrative team. And I think that's been a, a great journey for us to collectively learn each other's philosophies and how we approach things from a systemic standpoint as a district moving forward. Because we have definitely had learning journeys together, and I think we've grown stronger in our trust and understanding, but also in finding that we have a lot of commonalities that we maybe just haven't had time to talk about. Finding time to talk, you'd think it would be easy, but it's not. So in our journey, when I transitioned to my position over at Garfield, we were taking a look at data as I was entering and discovering that we kind of had flat data. Hadn't really grown a lot, hadn't really dropped a lot, fairly consistent, which in a lot of ways can be perceived as a good thing. Things were going pretty well. We also took it as the challenge of, but we are not where we need to be according to the multi-tiered system of support, which used to be the RTI, Response to Intervention Model. So as we moved ahead in our journey, Nancy Anderson came over as the District Special Ed Coordinator, and did a presentation for us, kind of talking about different structures that could exist to address what we do with kids when they maybe aren't making the gains or growth that we would hope they would in core, our regular, our instruction provided by regular ed teachers, and then what that looks like as we evolve possibly into looking at referring a child. Because in addition to some flat data, we also had identified that our special education population had grown significantly in the previous years, and has continued to grow as I have been at Garfield also. So the question for our team as a school was really, what's, what's not, is something not working? If our sped population is growing and our gen ed levels are staying fairly stable? So Nancy came and presented, and at the end of her presentation, we had a really long conversation at a faculty meeting follow-up, and then as our continuous improvement team, Mr. Murtha always guides us to have those difficult conversations about what else can we do? Which led us to the question of, would we be better off problem-solving as grade-level teams, rather than as a, a big building group? Because grade-level teams have that intimate knowledge of their kids, we know what we've taught in the core, we would know then what to intervene on as we move forward with kids who are struggling to maybe make sense out of what the core instruction is providing. And our journey has been mostly this year. We kind of set ourselves up and our learning as a school to be prepared to do some grade-level problem-solving in our PLCs. I think a huge other impetus for us in my selection of this topic was, we were moving to a different structure for PLC. We had a weekly, ongoing opportunity to talk about data, and that was new to our teachers. So in hopes of providing them some supports, we took on the grade-level problem-solving piece with some structured forms that we created to kind of guide their conversations. So at the end of data runs for us, which occur three, four times a year with different data, we take a look at our data and identify what possibly is an area of gap, and/or an area where we would expect our students to maybe have performed better, closer to that eighty percent as a multi-tiered system of support would identify as being kind of in sync. We then identify an intervention that we would like to do moving forward, and give it like a six-week try for the intervention. MTSS recommends a six-to-eight week window where we take something different and then identify whether it has worked or not. So we are doing that right now at grade levels. And what we have found, we've had some growths, we've had some learnings, but we have also discovered that it's really difficult to put tier-one interventions into place. So on top of teaching the regular ed curriculum, this process for us is also asking our core classroom teachers to identify, well, if that didn't work, then what do you want to try next? Within the boundary of their whole group classroom. This is not an additional supplemental support for us. We are a title school, as many other elementaries are in the district. So we identify those things happening as a tier-two, kind of an above and beyond. We are really looking at how can we strengthen core through the work of our project that I brought to Garfield School. And in many ways, we have strengthened core. We've had some groups make some great gains, identifying areas of need through their data and setting specific goals with explicit instruction to follow at the core tier-one. And then we've got a lot of opportunities this year where we've seen great growth. Kids who have learning groups that have shifted from maybe five to ten percent, identifying certain blending sounds correctly, as we look at breaking words apart for early readers, to kids at ninety percent by the end of a six-to-eight week intervention achieving success. So we've seen some great, what I'm going to call little pieces of data, that we hope as we continue to move forward and build our system, are going to allow us at the core level to strengthen up some of those holes that we've seen in our past. You know, it's been a journey. It's by no means perfect, but we are also, at the end of this, still asking ourselves, is grade level the right way? Would we be better off if we had representation from different grade levels? And if there was a team to go to to say, hey, I've tried this with my student, I've tried this with my student, what do I do next? We are still exploring that next piece. But we do know that when we've implemented some problem-solving strategic identification of an area, that we are seeing some great gains in our data, in the short interim pieces. Our hope by the end of the year is that our end-of-the-year benchmark testing that we are currently doing right now, as we end our school year, will help to identify whether some of these pieces we've put in place are going to be identifiers for us to show that we've had the success that we are hoping for. If I were to go to our MCA performance this year, we are flat.
This isn't bargain data.
We're flat, sorry. It's embargoed. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So, anyway, I'll go back to our regular data that we've been using. And I'll quit. Do you have questions?
Go ahead, Charles. With, with the grade level, where you're doing the planning, just, how do you, how do you account for group think after a certain amount of time? Or how would you, without some input from other grades or, or people from other grades in that planning or development?
So currently, we're using our team data that we benchmark test with multiple times a year. So our meetings are actually as grade level, there are special education representatives there, there are also intervention people there. We just right now aren't bringing in a fourth-grade teacher to tell a third-grade teacher what intervention might work best. They still have those conversations periodically, but we don't necessarily have our system set up right now for cross-grade problem-solving. Our hope was to use our content area experts to be able to dig deeper into our curriculum to identify those interventions that would help the larger portion of kids.
Thank you.
So we do think-tank still, but not necessarily across grade levels when we pick our goal for this, because the instructions provided by that grade-level teacher.
Makes sense. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone, all the principals and admin that went through this. A lot of extra work piled on top of already stressed and busy days and weeks. So thank you for, for attending. Tim, I know you're very much a metric-driven individual, and I'm wondering, you know, within the team, you know, this, this is nice in the presentation, and tomorrow, I will have forgotten this, and I'm wondering, is there any way that we can incorporate pieces of this, maybe once a quarter or something, where, or if there's going to be some strategic items, that there's three or four pieces that could be reported back, so we could see on the investment what, you know, what's happening over the course of the several years coming ahead? You know, some, some sort of a dashboard measurement of some, something that indicates, here's the top three things or the four things that, and here's how we're, you know, an update once a quarter or something on one item, two at the most maybe?
I, I don't think that would be a problem at all, because what you're really asking about is evidence that the continuous improvement process is applying the learning that was required.
Uh-huh.
required. And that's not going to be difficult. I will be happy to produce that. What you're going to see, and then maybe I'm jumping ahead a little bit to the curriculum update, you're going to see that there are certain very concrete identified pieces of their learning that we're starting to embed in. And one of them is a strategic action initiative structure. It's going to replace a structure that's currently in our continuous improvement process. You've probably heard me talk about section five of the plan at some point or another. The principals never want to hear that phrase again, section five. But what that is, is that's where you design change for your site. You just set a goal, now you're going to take actions to fulfill that goal. So that's been the plan within our plan for a long time. We're going to revamp that using resources specific from the Principal Academy, and I can lay that out as we go through that process. So you're going to see some pieces of change come through just as we asked for.
Thank you. Tommy, you teed that up perfectly because that's exactly where we're heading. So, you know, as we've gone through this learning, we're looking at, in June, we're going to go into a leadership retreat to really start looking at what are the strategic directions we need to set and how is that tying back to the district's vision and mission? And from there, I think as you start to, and we look forward to strategic planning collectively as a group and laying those next steps out, all of that work is going to be tied directly back to that. So it really was a solid foundation to bring us back collectively. We joke, we have joked about being the 12, 13 independent school districts of ISD 181, and this has put it back that we are together. And when we say we are the district, it's all of us, from teachers to principals to everyone working, we are the district and we're focused and united for our students and their increased student achievement. So it has been a lot. So some of our principals will tell you too, that when you're trying to take two days in the middle of a month to really focus on professional development, but that was the gift of it. We haven't had that time to do it collectively and to do it with such high quality from the National Institute of School Leadership as well as University of Minnesota. And I did want to end with, we did have a little fun along the way. Principal Raski organized for the entire region five dress-up days. So every time we came on the second day, we'd have dress-up days. So you can probably guess some of the themes from seeing the pictures. But that allowed too, when we're so busy doing our jobs, especially with our colleagues within the region, giving us a different avenue to open up a conversation. And I just know collectively, I think I can speak on behalf of the group, that I think we feel closer to one another and have a connection and a commitment and a respect for one another that probably was there, but we didn't really get to show or nurture until we had the opportunity to go through the Principal's Academy. So it's been valuable. We've spent, you know, those binders are full of case studies, so we spent a lot of time researching other districts and what they've done throughout the country to see how they've gotten to their level of success. It's been invaluable.
And I think to Director Haglund's question, in our selection of our own personal projects for our school, we also found some emerging themes across the district too of, while we think this is a need for our school, when we all met and looked at each other's topics, it was like, oh, well, you're kind of doing something like I'm doing. So I think collectively, some of these next steps of visioning and doing some strategic conversation may lead us to following the path of this at a more strategic systemic level too.
And I would like to add too, that on June 12th, if you're free, I'd love to have as many of you as possible come to Sourcewell because we'll be doing, I believe it's 17 projects from our district, and there's approximately 17 more from other principals or administrators in our region. Plus, Fergus Falls is going to be there, and they're going to be dispersed throughout rooms, and there's going to be all kinds of topics that you can go and hear the research that all of these principals have been working on over the course of two years. So that's on the 12th of June. Then the next day, I should have said too, that Dr. Katie Pukel has been leading the Principal Academy. If you remember when some of you actually met me and came to this, when we were presenting on the Principal Academy, she was the person that I presented with at that time. She has been the facilitator for every one of these meetings that have occurred, and then she's brought professionals from around the state and around the nation to help teach different topics at each of these different sessions. Well, she's going to be coming and spending June 13th with our team, talking about, okay, we have all this information, now where do we take it as we move our district forward? And that's actually one of the reasons that we're asking to change the board meeting date of June 24th because we're going to be working through Sourcewell, some of us, about taking all of this information and now how do we strategically plan to continue this learning as an administrative team and to help move, continue to move our district forward? We don't want to get this in awesome professional development and then just drop it and not do anything with it. We want to take this learning and continue to progress our district as we move forward. So I just have to say thank you to everybody who has committed hours and hours and hours of time for this professional development, and thank you to the board for allowing our entire administrative team to go because it means so much more if everybody has the same language, the same vocabulary, the same learning, rather than one principal here going or another person going here. And so thank you to the board for making this a reality for our district.
Will the new principals you've brought online since then have the opportunity to go?
Actually, you'll see that my name isn't on there anymore because Tammy Nelson came in and then Craig Kat Smith came in, and so I gave them my spot, and I just go in and listen when I can, and it's worked out really beautifully to do that. But when Tim and Heidi and I met the other day, we said, as new principals come, we need to send them to the Principal Academy where it's offered different places in the state so that, again, they're having that same vocabulary, they're getting that same current research, and we're being able to have that dialogue in our professional development and our principal meetings or our administrative team meetings.
I just want to thank you for bringing it to us, for teaching us about it at MSBA when we first met you and bringing it to our district.
Yep. And Sourcewell's been amazing with the funding partnership to make sure that we had that opportunity right here within our region. It's phenomenal.
Yeah, they've helped a lot financially to make this a reality. And then I have to say thank you to Tim and Heidi who have just taken this charge and just kept it going. And so kudos to the two of you too for doing an awesome job.
Excellent work.
Director Blacklance, to answer your question about future leaders having access, any of the TOSs here in the district at this time had to do all the reading. Principals, they just didn't get to go to the sessions and they didn't get to write the paper. They got the handouts, assignments, and they had to read the books.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks so much for the presentation. Next up, we have our budget update with Marcy Lawren.
Mine isn't that exciting, I guess.
Come on, it's numbers.
So the first page of the document is the projected budget summary, and our starting point is revision one of this year, so 1819, revision one unassigned deficit was about 638,000. Then we look at, what are we, what do we have going on for next year? So we project our enrollment, sat down with Sue and Lane and said, what do we all agree will be our student count for next year? Look at special ed revenue. We put in a projected 2%. I know that we're going to talk about that a little bit later with what's happening at the legislature. And then also looked at title. They recommend, the state recommended that we reduce Title I about 15% and Title II 10%. Then with expense projections, if any known settled contracts are in there, and then there was estimates for the remaining contracts put in, and an estimate for the contracted transportation. And then one of the line items is cost savings from staff replacements. So as of last week, so May 7th, it was all the replacements we know of, and since then there's been resignations. So this is a working document. This is just a snapshot in time for you guys. The next section is positions added and positions reduced, and then we break it out certified versus non-certified. So you can see the net reduction is a total of about 22.53. And then positions replaced, as I said, that was as of last week, the amount of positions that we've had, resignations, retirements, and then filled. And then at the very bottom is our class size targets. So our midpoint starts at 23 with kindergarten and just goes up by each grade level, and the low and the high is 10% up or 10% down. We use that when we're looking at the sections. So on the third page of the document, we have next year's projected students with the sections that we have proposed as reducing, and then you can see the per-class size amounts. All of those are within the ranges that we had set as targets. The second page is a summary of the FTE reductions and additions by site, breaking out elementary, middle school, high school, Brainerd Learning Center, Lincoln Education Center, and then early childhood special ed. Any questions on that? So in summary, right now, we are projected unassigned deficit of about 60,000, so a balanced budget, as Lane would say.
That's a balanced budget to me.
That's awesome. Good work.
Yeah. Well, and we did want to talk about, you know, what's happening at the legislature. If we do get less than 2%, that is not a good thing for us. We would have to go back to the table.
But like you said, there were a couple people that have resigned just within the last day or so, some of them we acted on today. So again, we try to do things through attrition. We also try that if it's someone that's quite expensive to replace with really strong growing candidates that are newer out of college and that we can help train too. So we're feeling really positive about where the budget is this year, probably the best for sure since I've been here because we really balanced it this year, which is great.
So will we know by next Monday what the legislature is going to do?
We were supposed to know last week. Imagine having.
But the last day is next Monday, correct?
Correct.
Could it go beyond that?
If they have a special session, then yes. And I think we could talk about that right now. Again, they're very far apart. Right now, at this time as we speak, the governor's target is $718 million in the next biennium. The House is at 900 million and the Senate is at 206 million. I think the piece that we're really watching very carefully is the governor and the House have 3% on the first year and 2% on the second year, and we've budgeted for 2 and 2 is what when I went and visited legislators at the Capitol, they thought that it would probably end up 2 and 2 in the end. And so that's what we've been doing our calculations on. Right now, the Senate's at .5 and .5, and if by chance we end up at .5 and .5, then we've got to go back and do a little bit more work. But I just truly believe that they're going to come together and they're going to find something that is going to be very workable for us. And like I said, I've never felt so good about where our budget is coming into the board meeting like we did tonight. And so we're going to be okay, but we're watching it really carefully, and we're going to be ready to adjust in whatever way we need to.
Thank you, Marcy. Okay, new business for action items. First up is the approval for the purchase of the lease for the 26 Chromebooks and licenses as part of our one-to-one approve initiative of $617,110.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Campbell. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the approval for the purchase and lease of the 400 iPads, cases and licenses as part of our one-to-one approve initiative of $145,980.
I'll sum over that.
We have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Haglund. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now the approval to award Brainerd High School lower lot reconstruction to the Anderson Brother Construction Company utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchase Agreement for an amount not to exceed $1,779,877.23.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion?
I just had a question again on the funding for this and the source of the 1.8 million. That's not part of our, is it part of our 205 or is this aside of that, right? And this is going to come out of?
Premium.
Okay. Any further questions?
No, I would just like to reiterate that if it comes as low as we are all hoping it does, that we take a look at those stairs as part of this.
Absolutely. Yeah, I agree. With lighting on the stairs too for when people are going up and down during the dark.
If there are no other questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the approval of the health insurance premium of an increase of 7.3%. Marcy, you going to talk to us with Jenny?
Yes.
She's coming.
We weren't sure if you guys would want an update or not. So as noted in the memo, NIS recommended a 5.2%. The Benefits Committee and Admin are recommending 7.3 because in our negotiated contracts, the district contribution was based on a 7.3 estimated increase, so we'd like to stick with that. And it'll only help our self-insurance fund. So that is the recommendation. And then Medica, this is the third year that they offered a renewal, and the union agreed, the teachers' union agreed to the renewal, so we don't have to go out for bids with the, I guess, the promise that next year we will go out for bids.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I saw moved. Three sub 7.3.
Okay. We have a first from Director Campbell and a second from Director Blacklance. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, the approval of the ground, Grand Rounds contract.
Round and round. Whichever. Thank you, Sue.
I'm really hungry, so we're going with ground round. For the 9-1-2019 through 8-31-22 is a three-year contract as per the presentation on April 22nd. Did anybody have further questions after reading the information and hearing the presentation last month or, yeah, last month?
And I would like to further clarify, if you noticed in the agreement, it was 20% return, not the third that was originally said. Erin Casper apologized, he misspoke. So it is a 20% return, and it is on the following year. So if we get services the fourth year, we would get that 20% return back.
Oh, and the case that we didn't?
Yes.
Have a one-to-one ROI.
Yes.
Correct. So it's the recommendation of both the Benefits Committee and administration that we move forward with Grand Rounds.
I'll make that motion that we approve the Grand Rounds contract for the time listed here.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a first from Director Nystrom, a second from Director Nelson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
You.
You don't want to stay over?
Next up, the approval of the Next up, the approval of the amendment to purchase the agreement, for the purchase agreement for the trades program home. Okay, we previously approved an amount on March
Fifty-nine thousand six hundred.
And we are now changing it to $48,319.63.
So, the modifications are listed. Every house is kind of custom-built. So, at the time that this agreement was put together, there was an idea. And then the buyer actually put in what they wanted, hence the modifications. So, this is not uncommon from what I understand. We do have amendments to our agreements.
So, we haven't purchased those items that they're not using. So, really, we're going to break even.
Yes.
I'll move the approval of the change, the amendment for the purchase agreement of the trade home.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first from Director Nelson, a second from Director Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And now, we're going to talk about possibly changing the meeting or we're going to, how do you want us to handle this?
I think we probably will just hold off on this one. But as we talked about during, when we talked about the Principal Academy and what the administrative team would like to do as far as doing some strategic planning, one of the trainings that Sourcewell has is the night of the 24th and the 25th of June. And we would like to change that meeting to a, like a noon meeting again, which would turn it into a special meeting. But because of the building project and we don't know when it's going to be really important to have that meeting, whether it's the week before or if we should wait till the week after, I'd like to just have the board be aware that we're going to change that date. But at, either at the next meeting on the 28th of May or the first meeting in June, we will set the date of that meeting when we know when ICS is going to need us to have some more board action, if that's okay with the board.
I think that will work out just fine. We don't really need to make a motion then, neither do we. Okay. Okay. Next up, informational, Brainerd Public Schools Foundation report. Director Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. The foundation met last Monday here and basically working on their next task on putting together the Hall of Fame and the Senior Recognition Night, which is on the 22nd. So, you're all invited to come to that. Again, all that is happening out of Forest, you know, and the Hall of Fame has been added to their, to that same night too. So, the Hall of Fame starts at 5:00.
5:00.
5:00. And then 6:30 for the Senior Recognition Night. So, lots of money given away then too. And again, lots of work that they've been doing on that besides all their other duties. But it was short and sweet, but begin working on that. So, that would end my report.
Thank you. Curriculum report, Mr. Murtha, did you have more to give us?
A little bit.
Alrighty. Ready.
I have the other half of my sheet of paper. Okay, just a couple of things for you real quick as an update. The K-12 science standards, the Writing Committee for the State of Minnesota voted to send their recommendations to the Commissioner last Friday. And this is relevant to us. I do have some science groups that are in a holding pattern right now, waiting the outcome of that decision about where the standards are at. So, that's why I haven't brought forth to you an immense amount of curriculum for approval as I would normally do in the spring in any given year. We're waiting for some clarification on the placement of the physical science standards and the Earth and Space Standards. The life science standards are going to stay essentially the same as they're at right now, 7th grade and then the biology class in the high school. But the other ones are kind of moving around a little bit on us. So, before I dedicate them or commit them to an immense amount of work, I want them to have a fixed target on the horizon that they're working towards. So, I want to give clarification on that. Coming up in the near future, we have some professional learning opportunities. Coming out of last week, May 7th and 8th, we had our continuous improvement wrap-up meetings where the site teams return here, much like they did when they came in August 7th and 8th, to do their planning, to start evaluating the quality of their plans and start evaluating and setting goals for next year. So, we've already started to turn that corner to the planning for next year. So, the two deliverables for that time were, number one, they're evaluating whether or not they did their plans, whether they did them with fidelity, whether they think they worked or not, and then starting to collect ideas that they want to bring forward to next year. And we try to do that in May while the, it's all still fresh. We all still remember the year. An awful lot of high-quality self-restoration can occur between June 6th and August 29th. And so, between those blocks of time, some ideas could get lost. So, if they've got that perfect idea that'll save public education in the United States, we don't want it to disappear into the summer fog. So, we start that process in May. Coming up on June 3rd, we're going to have some staff development opportunities for the entire district. We have the gap closure presentation for Dr. Anton Troyer. And then in that afternoon, each specific site has site-sponsored professional learning around pieces of their continuous improvement plan, some of which include Dr. Troyer's work for certain sites. Moving beyond that, June 4th, we have a curriculum writing day where the secondaries are going to be focused on technology instruction and technology in their curriculum. So, you're going to see the high school groups doing a lot of OER work. And you're going to see that the middle school teams are working on their blended OER structures, looking for resources, vetting them, and looking at instructional practices to support them. At this time, we're going to begin next year's curriculum work, specifically middle school language arts grades five through eight. They're our next content area up for review. So, we've already begun pre-meetings with them, setting the table about what the process is going to look like. We're going to be meeting them, meeting with them monthly. We're going to do some shared learning around best practices and literacy at the middle school level, and then creating our recommendations coming out of there next spring. Looking ahead, in June, so far, we have 11 groups identified for curriculum writing, down from last year. But with the snow makeup days, that week would have normally been the curriculum writing week in the summer. I think many groups are ready to be done. And so, we're not going to have as many takers on the voluntary curriculum writing as we have in the past. And that's okay because I have them doing an entire day of curriculum writing as part of the makeup so they can't escape. You will also have the annual ACOMP report in June. Mr. Jobe will be replacing Mr. Edinger in making that report this year. July, we will be bringing forward student handbooks to you for approval. And then August 6th and 7th is the 2019-20 continuous improvement retreat. So, I wish to invite any and all of you to attend the retreat. It's here at Wesba, rooms 20217, all day, both days. Every site is in. Every team is working on setting their goals, reviewing their data, and applying the learning that they have from the Principal Academy to the new work that they're doing. And that's the quick version.
Hey, Tim, on that, could you send us, get an email out to us as to when that is and the timing?
The CIP retreat?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Thank you.
Business Services Report, Marcy. We're getting your exercise tonight.
All right. So, the financial report is in your board packet. Nothing alarming to note. I took out the debt service and construction funds because they're unique this year. And we would be at about 63.7% compared to budget. And last year, taking those out, we would have been at 64.8. So, we're tracking very nicely. The enrollment report is also in there. We are down seven from last month, kindergarten through 12, and then up 10 overall, early childhood. It looks like we're tracking very closely actually with how we ended last year. I am curious to see how the ADMs come in because our ADMs at the end of last year are less than what we have in our revised budget. So, hopefully, it comes in higher. Fingers crossed. I also just wanted to note, last month in April, we had quite a few MDE staff here monitoring. We had title monitoring, a test monitoring, and a special ed monitor here. So, the title monitor, I was going to report back on, there was only a couple recommendations. It was a very, very good report and they said we're doing a great job. So, it's good to get that back. The new accountant started today, so everyone should be clapping. And then, which will help, my check register will be at the next meeting. Maybe they'll be more timely now. And coming up, the 1920 budget in June and then insurance policies. Some kind of good news as well, our work comp mod went down to .71, which it was .82 last year. So, that'll be a savings as well. Very good.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's Report. All right. I just have a couple of things that we'll add here. First of all, if you remember last fall, the Board of Education approved to have Doctors Roger and Kay Warner come and do a district-wide assessment of our school district. And them, along with Katie Pikel, it's really, we've been doing some really great work this year on getting a good handle on our district. And so, they are going to be here on Tuesday, May 21st, and Wednesday, May 22nd to give us a brief synopsis of the work that they've done. And so, we're looking forward to sharing that information with the board and also sharing it with our entire administrative team. And so, that's going to be a wonderful addition. One thing that I'd like to add about the budget that Marcy was talking about that I forgot to mention when I was talking just a little bit about some of the differences that's going on in the legislature right now. And that, one thing that I'd like to remind the board that both Marcy and I, I know when Steve was here as well, all of us have the, kind of the same philosophy of estimating really conservatively. And so, that's another piece that we're really pleased about as we're looking at ending out this year and beginning another school year. And I didn't talk about that at that time, but just something to keep in mind as we're watching what happens at the legislature. The last couple of things that I've got, I'm not going to read through all of the things going on in May. It is such an exciting and busy time. I think you just need to have your calendar by you at all times. But there's a couple of things that I don't have on that calendar. And that is, I'd like to remind that we have Project Oversight on Monday, May 20th, from 12 to 2:00 p.m. here in the boardroom. And then, the last one that I'd like just to accent again is if you're free on June 12th, and we can take a carload over to Sourcewell with the Principal Academy, I'd love to have some board members come with. And if it looks like we're going to have a quorum, then we will advertise a public meeting that we'll be having in that. And we'll do that ahead of time, once we have an idea of how many board members would be attending the great work that our administrative team has been doing. So, with that, again, I just want to say thank you to everybody for making all of these things a reality. We're really doing some great things in this district and you need to be really proud of the work that's being done. And so, thank you to everyone for that time that you're putting into it. So, thank you. That goes through the board too.
Alrighty, thank you. So, as you can see, we have all these meetings coming up here in May. So, I'll just let you read through those yourselves. But we for sure want to mention the groundbreaking. May 21st at Baxter Elementary, May 22nd at Harrison Elementary, and the 23rd for Nisswa. And they're all at 9:30 in the morning. So, come if you can.
Baxter one, where exactly?
At the new site.
But I mean, how do you get into it on the east side?
At the roundabout, just go south, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I think there's three gates. I guess the middle gate, I would have it marked and nice.
Be marked. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll tramp through the woods. And we're going to have shovels, and we're going to have hard hats, and vests for all of you to wear. So.
Oh, boy.
Any board members that are there will be taking a picture along with some other dignitaries from, whether it's Baxter or Nisswa or Brainerd. Lots of people will be there, lots of short, very short speeches. Maybe some of you are even giving one of our little speeches, just thanking the public for making this a reality and actually turning that ground. You know, I was thinking, Brandon, when you talked about that tomorrow, they're actually going to the new site that just got finalized today. Tomorrow is really the official day of the first start where we're going to see things happen to the dirt. So, yay.
Good job.
Our next meeting is a special school board meeting on May 28th at noon. Make note of that. There's no other business. We're going to go into closed session. We are going pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.03 for labor negotiation strategy. Meeting adjourned.
We need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion.
I saw moved. Second.
Campbell and Nystrom, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye. Motion carries.